This work session of the GMSD school board is now in session. We have one item on the agenda, and that is GMSD fiscal year 2019-20 general fund budget. And I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Jones to begin a presentation.
Okay, we'll start on page two. Each of you should have a hard copy of the presentation. Just looking at the changes in the budget, of course, the majority are a result of adding the new elementary school for still. Projected enrollment, we're looking at 6,140 students for next year. Looking at revenues, as far as the changes in revenues to fund these additions. Looking at the county funds, we've projected an additional 667,000. What we did basically was bring it in line with 2017-18 collections, plus another $326,000 for our increase in our ADA percentage, it went from 4.16 to 4.24. Basic Ed or BEP, we projected a 3% increase, or $615,000 for FY 1920. Our figures that we received late last Friday afternoon will give us an additional $240,000 on top of this. So we're in discussions as to how to use those funds.
So on top of the amount?
On top of the 615, or what you have budgeted.
Okay.
We can add-
How much?
240,000.
So now that, just like always, this is gonna ebb and flow here until we get our final BEP allocation.
We may not use all of it, because this is our first estimate, and we'll continue to get them until our final BEP number in July.
And as you know, when we talk about projections of students, this is something that we try to hit close, but know that especially for all the kindergarteners, those are really just guesses based on historical numbers. So when we're looking at student numbers and that's driving that revenue number, know that that's something that's always changing. How many kindergartners are gonna come to Dogwood next year?
And the BEP numbers, remember, we run a year behind on enrollment, so we're looking at around 6,000 as our enrollment for the BEP number for next year. So if we do go to 6,140, then we potentially could receive some BEP growth dollars at the end of the 1920 school year. Mixed drink tax, looking at an increase of $53,000 and approximately $75,000 in interest Looking at our reserves, we've earmarked roughly 3.9 million in reserves for capital project funding. As we get into it, 3 million is for the Houston Middle School addition. $870,000 helps balance things out, but should the county commission dollars come through, we still haven't received all of our 17-18 allocation, 18-19, it's a little over 5 million that we're waiting on. Plus, we should receive another allocation for 1920. So, not sure when we're gonna get that money, how we're gonna get it.
We have not, in our revenue side, we have not calculated those dollars from Shelby County because they're so sporadic. So know, if we get those, you cannot repay, like, we can't say, "Oh, we're gonna put this back into our savings account." It has to be spent on new capital, or the capital itself that we hadn't already allocated that money or spent that money. So know that for us to balance the budget, that's one area that Mr. Kathy's budgets, and he'll go through his, is gonna take a significant hit in the fact that we don't have the general fund dollars allocated there. Another topic of conversation that we talked about, when we first did the initial Houston Middle School number, we just put in a placeholder of 5 million when we did the Ask the City. We knew we had done zero programming, we had not looked at our square footage, but by adding a gym and fine arts facilities at Houston Middle School, we're talking about an $8 million project. So that's why you see the other 3 million here, has moved there to go ahead and plan that project. That doesn't mean that we don't ask the city for additional funding for that project board, that we can't use the county dollars as they come in to offset that project, but know that we have allocated that money from reserve to make up the difference and build what we need and what we want at Houston Middle School.
But there's no guarantee that we'll see that county money in time to-
Not in time to build, but that being said, we are still, we're not looking at the new county dollars.
Right.
Money that's already been appropriated for the current fiscal year we're in and the last fiscal year still haven't been given to us because Shelby County Schools hasn't drawn on it yet. I think the likelihood of receiving that funding is greater, because like I said, it's already been appropriated.
Okay.
So we should have additional funding also coming for this year's budget process. It's just a matter of when do we actually receive.
So it may relieve up to 3.9 million.
Okay.
So we could see it.
Could be in the operating room.
Yes.
And also to generate dollars to fund changes in the 1920 budget, we've had some expenditure reductions, right around 1.4 million in total. Those are, the technology loan from the city of Germantown will be paid this year, in June 2019, $296,000, that'll be our final payment on that loan. $380,000 reduction in needs for the one-to-one technology initiative, $150,000 in judgments, $250,000 in supplies and materials for the new school startup. And those are dollars that we had budgeted in this current year to go ahead and make those purchases, you know, just from a timing standpoint, to get them in before the school opened. $117,000 removing the leasing cost for the district office as we transition to our new facility. $114,000 supplies and equipment in the technology budget, and $96,000 in equipment and the regular education support budget. So all this together helped fund our initiatives for the 1920 budget. Any questions on that?
Yes.
No, it's in another section, but since we've already talked about it as a highlight, I was just gonna ask, the judgments, there were two years, it was like 175 and then 150, and then now we're to zero, which is useful.
Yeah.
Well, it just depends on if there's a legal-
That's because it's still unknown, so there could still be, we just don't know it.
If you had something that we don't budget for, it's just if we have a-
Right, okay, but that's what you've done historically, is not budget for it.
That's correct.
We just know that that's what it's always been.
We would have a special meeting of the board, talking about, and we would have legal counsel guiding us, and if that was the case, we would do a move from the reserve to-
To behave ourselves. What about the portables? Do we see an expenditure reduction as we-
I'm assuming that the plans are-
Yes.
Yeah, the expenditure removal for removal of the porters, portables, I think is $162,000 per year, but we'll see when we get to the capital budget.
It's just been used for another-
It's already been-
It's been anyway.
You didn't forget about that.
But we could, we could have included that up here.
Just didn't see it.
Yes.
It's just kind of an in and out, it's just been used.
Just a little house, house cleaning thing, under, under the profile, you might wanna, it says extracurricular activities that promote academics, athletics, citizenship in our students, you might wanna plug arts in there.
Sure.
Just as a, it's just a two cents thing.
Sure.
I think it might be good.
Cover all the pieces.
Yes.
Okay, so we're ready to go to expenditures. So these are the major highlights. We are going to go through each budget, but we did wanna draw out some of these. You're gonna see Forest Hill, we almost need a sign as we start going through these budgets to say, "Forest Hill, Forest Hill," because you'll see it added in teachers, you'll see it added in student services, and librarian, counselors, you name it, they're gonna be there. Okay, but some other key things are TCRS retired rate, that's the amount that the district tests contribute for our retirees. We are, that is required, so we were told that that's going up from 10.46 to 10.63, and all districts saw that across the state. So that was for us, an impact of 43,000. And then also for our employees, you know that we have steps, so as they're here for years of service, we pay them for that, so that does have a cost of 400,000 this year to provide those steps for those employees who are still moving up to the top of their pay scale. Know that when we talk about Forest Hill, and like I said, you're gonna see these in individual line items, we are talking about a $2.2 million operating cost every year, and that's even just with the phase in that we're talking about right now. We aren't starting with just one assistant principal, one guidance counselor, principal at that school, so know that that is our amount to run a new school, that's why we are being run efficiently. So you can see all the items that were included, I won't read all of those, but know that some, some keys I will pull out. We have not reduced the MAPS teachers, the music, art, PE from the other schools, so when we talk about the regular teaching staff, we are moving staff from Dogwood, Farmington, and Riverdale to the new school. But just because we are removing two or three sections at each grade level doesn't mean that we could remove MAPS teachers from those schools, so they will be staffed richer at those schools with those sections of MAPS. Now, it's still gonna be a struggle to do some of the schedules because of the change in the PE bill, you know that we have to provide that two times a week instead of like a two in one week, so know that even having it richer, there are still some struggles with scheduling the MAPS teachers when we look at all of our elementary schools. But you can see all the things that we've added, there is a nurse added for the new elementary school here.
So then with the MAPS, where they are changing from existing schools to the new school, those will be replaced?
Well, that's why I'm saying, they're not.
They're not, okay, that's what I thought, but that was the way you said.
Yes, so they're staying at their schools, but they're gonna have a, they're not gonna be used as many times during the week, they're not gonna be as, I guess, difficultly scheduled, yeah, heavily scheduled. So know that there is gonna be two new PE teachers, a music and an art teacher at the new elementary school.
But the music teacher leaving Dogwood, for instance, going to the new school, he's not being replaced.
He is being replaced.
Oh, that's what I was asking.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so there will be someone else hired for that position.
Yes, in that position, they're not losing a position at Dogwood.
A second person.
And then two, we have included increased costs for custodial utilities, transportation, and then insurance fees, those have been calculated and added on to Forest Hill. Other things that you're gonna see that we have added through this process, we have built in, like we always do, four teachers for growth, so if we see increased student enrollment, we don't have to have an emergency call meeting to add teaching staff, we can go ahead and hire those. There is one social-emotional teacher that we have added, so what we are looking at, and we are seeing increased rates of students that have emotional disturbance, they don't know how to respond appropriately, and so we are looking at developing a program, and at first, if we don't have students assigned to this social-emotional program, and it would be housed at Forest Hill, they can float and help our other teachers and staff at our schools to deal with these students who have severe emotional issues.
Because that's what I've heard out there a little bit from teachers and administrators, is that they need more help with behavior and social issues, so will they, they will cover like all the elementary schools, this person?
So at first, yes, now, they could help with others, but the goal eventually is to have somewhere, I don't know if you remember the step programs that we had in Shelby County, that this could be a placement for students to go, at that point, they wouldn't be able to float and serve other students.
Okay, so this is going to be-
Transition into that, so students who have severe emotional issues could be placed into this program to help them deal with their adjustments and then transition-
Okay, thank you.
-to other schools. Know that two, last round, if you remember, we did add those two behavior positions that we currently have, that are serving still multiple schools. So, and you can say, I forget the titles of the two positions that we had.
Academic and behavior consultant, now, one of our behavior consultants has recently been certified as a BCBA, and so that opens some more opportunities for us to partner with some community partners to train others. That was by the side of the point, but she's definitely very skilled in that area and has provided a lot of assistance for our students.
So initially, we're looking at her or him as someone who will float-
Floating and serving.
And serving all the, all the schools-
Yes.
With the goal of being, there being a program-
Yes.
For placement.
But will it just be elementary, because I can't see transitioning middle or high school over there?
We, we do the alternative school in the past for an emergency, and then the goal is to get them in, get them the help, the help they need, and have it assist their parents in finding outside assistance for them as well, and then to get them back to the home environment or the school setting as soon as we can. We've had a great success with providing a lot of behavioral support in that setting, but just like you pointed out, sometimes some of these kids, it takes a lot longer, and we don't want it to interfere with anybody else's learning or their learning, so it's just an option at the elementary level that hasn't been there.
I think that's good.
But this is in response to our student needs, and just like you said, the same things that you've been hearing, our staff has also been dealing with and hearing too, so know that they make points here. Other staffing changes, we are looking at an increase of a half of a gifted teacher at Riverdale, we know that we're trying to be comparable to all the schools. We've talked about health science, we've added that in teacher, an additional one at Houston High School. We were turning, I think Dr. Parks said, 100 students last year were told that we couldn't fit them into that class, and so we know that this is definitely a program that could use that additional stacking, so we have built that in to this budget. We are adding an additional special education teacher at Riverdale due to increased student needs, so that is in addition to the budget. We're looking at an inventory clerk shared by Technology and Finance, so this is a clerical position to help barcode and keep track of all of our equipment at all of our schools. So know that this person would-
Are they, are we barcoded since we became a district?
We have, but it's just, yeah.
It's been a, it's been a shared responsibility, so to speak.
It's become-
A little more resource.
Especially with the one-to-one growing as it adds.
Yeah. That was the one, yeah. Additarian.
You have to track that differently also, so know that with the, with the addition of a warehouse, it would be really helpful to have this person who also can go out to the schools, because we do have to document at the end of the school years that all these things are still there, that they're labeled appropriately.
And if you're gonna sell them, you need to know where they're, so no, that sounds good.
Other things that we've added, and this will be, this is a bittersweet change for me, so Mr. Haddo is going to be retiring from the district. I don't mean to jump the gun, that doesn't mean he's going away, he, I've talked him into staying with us.
He's a point five.
He is going-
He's only half of our strength.
He'll be half the person next year.
So know that I have talked him into continuing to work with us on a partial contract with us, he can work 120-day contract, it's a much reduced salary, and there are state guidelines for that. So know that our goal is, especially when we've been talking about social-emotional and the needs for our academies at the high school-
Yes.
This is something that Mr. Haddo is gonna serve students directly in that facility, so in that capacity.
And so as, because in the past couple of years, I've been saying, they need somebody to sort of, not, not over, not do all the work in the, but oversee and make sure everything that's going as planned.
Yes.
And I'm really happy to hear that we're gonna have someone do that. I think it's gonna make a big difference.
And for me, too, the-
I think that's the perfect person.
The quality, the quality of the program, too, not that we haven't, but especially when we talk about like the fine arts, it hasn't grown to what we want to see it be, or the leadership to have the programming that we want, I know that that is something that Mr. Haddo's been talking about, really helping students find their niche and find their capacity at the school, so know that that is his objective. So one of the things that we're gonna, you're also going to see is, with his position moving away, know that we are talking about Mr. Grace also making a transition. He is going to move out of his current position and move into human resources, and so you're gonna see that we have dissolved his, his budget, and so there are places in the budget, it looks like we're adding positions, all we've really done is take his budget, his section, and he's going out to different areas.
That might answer three of my questions.
Yes.
That's gonna be-
So you're gonna, so we're gonna address it as we start going, but you're gonna see this, so one example is like, we've taken the student interns, and they're up under the communications or Ms. Crowder's budget that we have at the school. You're gonna see Mr. Cooper, who's a CTT, he's moving to Dr. Parks' academic education budget, so you're gonna see these positions, so I just wanna highlight, those are the two big changes that we're seeing in the district. Besides Forest Hill and the central office, I'm changing some of the structure, the way that we are doing things. Other changes that you'll see, we have added a maintenance technician, yes, you were gonna ask about.
I'm sorry, I thought we were going to add the other clause, we added maintenance technician.
Yes.
It's clearly needed, or we wouldn't be getting another one. The SPED at Riverdale, is that gonna be able to do both middle and elementary?
I'm not sure their exact capacity, but probably, yes, I think they're doing co-teaching sections or classes.
They've grown in numbers mostly in their middle school, but they'll cover, we've done a scheduling meeting with them, so it looks like mostly sixth grade, but maybe a little bit of intervention for fifth grade.
Great.
Thank you.
Just another quick question, on the regular education teachers, we've always had, which I'm glad we do that, how many do we use this year?
I think we used, I think we still have three left that we were still-
We used two.
We used two.
Okay. Just curious.
Two out of the four?
Mm-hmm.
Five, we started with five.
We started with five last year.
Which is why we cut it back.
They cut it to four.
Okay, so when we look at other costs that you're seeing increase, I know that Dr. Parks is gonna address this, but she's been telling you that we have a year where language arts is coming up for review, so that's gonna have a more substantial cost, so textbook purchases is gonna be higher this year, so we're looking at an increase of 250,000. You see the increase in OPEV contributions, you know, we have an actuary that looks at how we're providing for our retirees' benefits, so know that that is a $30,000 increase, and we are fully funded with our other post-employment benefits. And then you're seeing, this will be a change that Mr. Kathy I know is going to bring to you. We are facing a challenge here, he will have a recommendation. Our current custodial company reached out to us and said that they were asking for an increase in the contract cost. Mr. Kathy asked them to justify that increase, and then they said, "We're not gonna continue serving you, we've been operating custodial for a loss in your district." So essentially, the contract has to roll over in May, and I know this will be on our next board meeting, that we'll talk about this, but know that that is too short notice for us to go out to bid and do the whole RFP process. So it is our request to piggyback off of the current SKB, which we have not used, that company in the past, Carville is currently using that, this company, it is a local company, they've been happy with custodial staff there, so it is our recommendation, piggyback on that contract for a year, and then decide whether we want to go out to RFP again, because this would be our fourth company-
Fourth.
Since we've opened, and a lot of them use the same staff, so, but it does have an increased cost, but I think this may be also due to new elementary school, new central office, so.
So we do have the cost of what this-
Yes, so know that we do have, they do a square footage cost, so. Mr. Kathy, I don't know if you want to share anything with?
Hi, as much as little as you'd like, but yeah, Mr. Manuel hit the highlights of it, this will be our fourth company, but the, there is, there are some differences in this company that haven't been, the other ones are national companies, ABM, GCA, AFS, we're a five-school district, and not to say we're not important, but a big national conglomerate company like that, our little book of business does in proctir world one way or another. The company that we're recommending is a small, local-owned company, that our business does matter to them, and if they lose it, it's going to matter to them. They've got some good programs in place that I'll go over at the board meeting, one of them is they actually have transportation for the employees, because as you guys know, most of, most of our custodial commute from a pretty significant distance to do the work. We're going out to the facility to visit it tomorrow, but they do some things different, which I'll go over, but yes, a 10% increase when we're not already receiving very good service from the current company, I pushed back just a little bit, not a lot, and said, "You're gonna have to justify this," and they said they were taking their toys and going home, and they would not service us after the last day of school, which is frankly fine by us.
Was there some contractual, like notification or time period that they were supposed to let us know about, and they did that?
There was, and they did, they did meet it. So the, the contracts real last day was supposed to be May 31st, but the last day of school, there's no point in them hanging around the week after we're done, we need to get the next custodial company in, that custodial company, assuming the board approves it, they need to start hiring now and ordering materials and equipment. It's a big transition to move company out, move another one in, and we've gotta start stripping the wax and floors when school is out.
So know that that's a change that popped up in the past two weeks, so know that we will bring that to the board, she often see the contract and see everything that we're looking at. You are also welcome to talk to the board members in Carville if you want to, to see Kathy. I know that Mr. Kathy has reached out to Mr. Simpson there and say, "How, how was the company?" And they were relatively pleased with their performance. Okay, other changes you'll see here, there is the increase now that we are gonna be paying for central office, so know that we have, like I said, it's a good change, we have switched lease payments for mortgage payments, so you'll see that in the district, so that is added here.
Growing up.
Yes, we're growing up. Other department changes, like I said, the instructional technology cost, you're seeing just that department essentially going away and spread out throughout the district, so we will highlight those individuals and people, they're not necessarily new positions, they've just moved from one budget to another. And then the special services department budget has been eliminated with cost and transferred to human resources and superintendent budget, so same thing you're seeing.
And that's Mr. Haddo's budget.
So, but we will highlight those as we go through.
Did you wanna mention the guidance, social workers?
Ah, yes, so-
With additional BEP dollars?
One of the things that we will be looking at, I know that we've given a presentation to the board, we were just trying to break even and handle immediate fire, but aspirationally, we wanna be on pace with our BEP allotments for counselors, social workers in the district. We're also looking at how we're currently serving our student management systems, our EIS system, so as we narrow down the exact increase that we're gonna have, I will come back to y'all with, for the final budget approval, some changes to say, "Hey, here are those positions," but know that that's what we're looking at right now, is we're looking at some additional positions, but we haven't ironed out with those, are you there? We want to see how much money it's going to be.
And we went through revenues at a high level already, so I think we're gonna go ahead on to expenditures, starting with Mr. Bland, and that would be on page 21.
Okay, the biggest change you'll see with this budget will be the addition of Ms. Bagwell, she's currently in the Grace Department, Go-Head Department, she's been moved to student services, and that's the-
Line 189.
Of the salaries, that's the biggest change that you'll see.
Ms. Bagwell, she, she manages our student management system, so she does the Skyword, but she's also a big part of what she does is state accountability, it's the EIS. Yes, she does the EIS system, so that's how our attendance clerks, when they enter in our data, it talks to the states, so that's really important.
And that was from Mr. Grace's-
And it was from, she was, so this is just a change of location.
Student services, you may notice, two things with that one, one is the addition of a school nurse at Forest Hill, and to remain competitive with local municipalities, we did move them from a seven-hour to eight-hour school day, and that's for salary, and it was an ask of principals to have them there a little earlier and a little later than the school day, and things happened during reading, when the kids were on campus, so we did move them to set up eight hours, so we had small costs associated with that.
The starting line principal, eight hours.
And then the other student support, the only thing with this one is the addition of Mr. Crump, who serves as a Safe School Specialist, he is being paid partially from the Safe Schools Grant, and the district picks up the other half, and so we put him, this is the budget that he will be housing.
Is he also 189?
So he's 189?
Yes.
Also 189?
Yes, 189.
I was looking for that.
That's the Safe Schools?
Yes, yes. There are basically no changes to this, to this budget, other than the software costs for the new school.
All right, Mr. Kathy's up.
Hold on one second.
So the 499, that was a big jump, was that what you were just talking about there?
The software.
That, that 529?
That 529?
Yeah, that's actually my notes. Other supplies and materials.
Well, both of those, but first, the other supplies and materials.
Which, which, which one?
Page 23.
490, yeah, count 499.
Attendance and planning, it's gone up $9,000, so.
So attendant, which, which line, I know attendance and planning, we did move, there is some in-service and staff development associated with Ms. Bagwell's position, that was moved from Mrs., Mr. Gray's.
Can we go back one page, please?
That's 23.
That is 23.
That is, but that, which page are you looking at?
Yeah, no, that's it. Okay, he was asking, and I was looking, I didn't see it up there.
Yeah, so.
Yes, 499.
Line number.
499.
499. Went from $2,000 this year to $11,000 next year.
It's print page 23, it's not page 23. Yes, 499, and Betsy was asking about 524 also, it's a.
499, no, I was asking about 499. That's the one I noted.
Would that be the cost of Skyward? Skyward is in Mr. Pierce's, yeah.
Yeah, because 524 is in service, that may be the increase from Ms. Bagwell.
Yeah.
I think that's the value increase on.
Yeah, that.
Bagwell is 524.
24. Yeah.
So there is some costs associated with that, if you give me one second to pull up. That one, I can take it away. Oh, that's the 499 is the OPEs. There's a $9,000 cost associated with that, so that's why that.
And that is our bullying program.
Yes.
Yep, that's that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was really optimistic that it was something to do with that, and I'm glad to know it is.
Okay, and then, on page 27, and other support, student support.
Page 27?
Page 27, okay. Yeah, and other student support slash guidance, 524, there's a $10,000 increase?
That's the in-service for the safety.
So that is currently housed in budget 641, and it's just been moved over since Mr. Crump was moved in.
Okay, so that's the in-service for, for Mr. Crump, for the Safe Schools, okay.
Any more questions before we move to the next department?
That's all the services with the seven people, that's the addition for the new school included?
Correct.
Because there was another number, okay.
We have five, and then we.
And another third one, where it bumped up to six, and I was wondering why that wasn't all six seven. Thank you.
And the increase in health equipment, that same page? Just curious if we were. It was a $6,000 increase?
Right, so that is for, these are the items that Mr. Fisher has, he's asking for these to get the new school set up, to be comparable to those, changing tables, those sorts of things that need in new school.
So this is the Forest Hill stuff? Got it?
That's not included.
Got it, makes sense.
These are a couple of the ones where the 17, 18, 19, instead of 18, 19, 20, the next few pages, yeah, that's just.
Yeah, just the top is off.
There were three different sections where that seemed to be the case.
They just didn't get changed. That's why yours, yeah, they just didn't get changed.
Yeah. Always there, and then twice in the special ed.
Good catch. Thank you.
I wondered if they were on a different budget. I know, I, I truly was like, well, maybe it's supposed to be that way, for a reason. But what's going on this year is what I'm trying to find out. And I did a lot of dividing by personnel.
Ready for Mr. Kathy?
Are you guys ready for Operation of Plant?
Yes, sir.
Start on page 33.
I was gonna go with this.
I'm sorry.
That takes it down.
That other salaries and wages on 189 for student supporting guidance, was that what we just talked about with the adding? Or was that the money we moved?
That was the money we moved, that's the Safe School Specialist.
Yeah. Okay, I wrote that down for them tonight, hold that down. I put him down here, that was, okay, it was up here, if you looked at him over here, got it, that's Mr. Crump. Thank you. Maybe that's Elyander's in your hard hat, that I've been looking at all weekend.
Okay, Mr. Kathy?
Okay, first budget, Operation of Plant. The only real change at the, at the top is an additional plant manager for Forest Hill Elementary School, and all the subsequent changes below that have to do with adding a plant manager at Forest Hill Elementary School. The bottom half of that, custodial services is increased, and we talked about that earlier, but that is to add the additional square footage to provide those services for the new elementary school and the central office as well, and to piggyback off of Carville's RFP, along with the rates per, per square footage, to cover that new custodial contract. Other contracted services as well, you'll see a $50,000 increase. What's included in other contracted services in that category, you have elevator services, in which we are adding an elevator at the, at the elementary school that has to be inspected monthly. We have controls and monitoring, so that's our security system that Johnson Controls Monitors, we have to add that to the contract for both of those new buildings. Garbage and recycling collection for both of those new buildings. Our energy management software, our landscaping contract with Aggrscapes as well. So all of those things are square footage based, pretty much, so when we added the new elementary school and the central office, we had to increase each one of those contracts. Let's see, building and content insurance, we took our best guess at what we think it's going to take to ensure the property there. We're working on quotes for that right now, hope to have that to the board by the May meeting for, for all of our insurances, workers' comp, liability, and all of the property as well. And, let's see, 599, you see a modest increase there, and that is for... Okay, out of that, we pay for pest control contract, or we control the fertilization contract, and a couple of other knickknacks. And then the reason you see plant operation equipment where there was none before is because we have a new plant manager, and all of our current plant managers were kind of, had grandfathered equipment when we took over the buildings. This one does not, so we're gonna need to give, give, give that person some startup tools and equipment. Any questions on Operation of Plant, before I move on to Maintenance of Plant? Okay, Maintenance of Plant, and 167 on the top, that is the additional maintenance technician that you saw when we talked about that earlier. That's for my department, in all honesty, to be able to chase all the fires and handle all of the workload that we have on a daily basis. Right now, we have Aaron Law and Greg Whitley. We're looking to add another technician, with the goal in mind eventually to at least do a real strong analysis and look at bringing maintenance in-house. This year, GCA's been a serviceable maintenance outsourced group, but there are drawbacks to that contract. Sometimes we just need people to do random jobs, we need someone to go dig a hole, we need someone to go pour concrete and set. It's not covered by GCA's contract, so anytime we run across something that's not, we're dealing with it. And through negotiations with GCA, we talked them into not giving us any increase in the contract for Forest Hill Irene and the central office the first year, since most of those items are gonna be under warranty for maintenance. But after that, they will be asking for a contract increase to maintain that square footage, and at that point, it really makes sense of us, for us to start looking at what it would cost to do it in-house versus what we're outsourcing.
How many, do you know, off the top of your head, how many school due requests we've had this year so far?
We're up over, well, this year, I, I don't, I don't know the exact number. Overall, we're up over 10,000 work orders in the system since we began as a district. So that's probably too long of an explanation, but that's the reason for the request for the additional maintenance technician to help with chasing.
So that's the current three plus the one that we already saw?
Correct, so in that, in that four is Aaron Law, Greg Whitley, Irvin Jones as well is in that budget, because in addition to being a plant manager at Houston High School, he also helps supervise custodial. And, and then the fourth would be the addition of the new maintenance technician.
And, but Mr. Jones, you know, the high school has two plant managers, because they have a daytime, and they have a nighttime, because there's so many activities at the high school.
And that would be explanations for the increase at the top. We did increase the budget just a little bit for maintenance and repair of buildings to take on the new school and the central office, but that does not include a contract increase for maintaining that square footage of the new elementary school or central office.
About how much money did you spend so far this year on maintenance and repair? Do you know?
I can pull that budget up and tell you, if you'll give me just a second.
Do we know? Well, that's the, he's still ongoing right now.
That's the budget.
Where we are.
Did we spend that, or did we?
Have we spent that?
Where, where are we?
Yeah.
No, he'll probably still have some, some left. Now, know that with the water testing, you know, that's.
Right now, there is 136,000 left in that budget. We've incurred and we've spent all the rest. And everything else, I think, is the same on the bottom. Any questions about Maintenance of Plant before we move on to Transportation? Okay, Transportation, there is a $100,000 increase there. The reason for that, in all honesty, is because this first year with Forest Hill Irene, my recommendation to the superintendent was everyone at the new school gets a bus if they want it, this first year. There aren't a lot of safe walking paths to that school right now, even though the road is supposed to be finished all the way to Forest Downs, some popper pike, I mean, it's, there's still a long way to go there, and for, for a lot of different reasons, it's just our recommendation where if you wanna bus this first year, you get a bus. We're gonna route you, we're gonna provide. Now, what that's, what that's going to look like budget-wise, that basically is a two, two-bus addition is what we put in the budget. If we added two buses, that's what it would look like. We may do better than this next year, we may do worse, because you guys are familiar with how we do, do transportation the first two weeks. We route everybody, and then we do stop counts the first two weeks, and then we start consolidating and making, trying to make them run as efficiently as possible. So hopefully, we don't have that increase, but with providing a bus for all, we just wanna plan for it, and then we'll have much better baseline data after this first year to, to look at and move forward with that budget.
Okay. Questions on Transportation?
I have a question about the overview, but should I get a few about that later?
Oh, I do.
Oh, okay.
This is Mr. Jones.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought this particular part was yours.
Okay.
Okay. I just had a question about the school funds, but we don't need to talk about that right now, I just need to know that I ask later.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be Josh, what we call.
I think they scared over the text from last year.
Yes.
Yes.
And when I read it, I thought, that was in there last year.
Yes, it's the same thing as that.
Yeah.
There's a.
To US.
Because they're not right. Because it's not right, yeah, I just called it, I was like, oh, that's not right.
Okay.
That's fine.
Regular capital outlay?
Regular capital outlay, this one, I wanna make sure I give a detailed explanation on, so the board fully understands what this budget looks like and where it's allocated. So there, there's a total of $5,327,000 in this budget. That looks great, until you start breaking down what it's going to be allocated towards. So the $3 million in 706, which is building construction, is going to be earmarked, assuming we don't receive funding from any other body for Houston Middle School. So we have funding of $5 million for Houston Middle School from the city, that would make up the, make up the difference there. Then we have 727,000 of that that's already allocated to go elsewhere. So if you look at line 590, which is transfer to the city of Germantown, 220,000 of that is for the Riverdale bond payments, that's an obligation that's gonna be going for 27 more years after this one. And then you have the $307,000 in payments that start this year for the capital outlay notes that were given to build the central office. So that's $527,000 that's going to be allocated going out, and then there's an additional $200,000 for the next five years that's gonna be allocated to go out for the fieldhouse. All that being said, the $5,327,000 really goes down to $1,600,000 for all of the rest of the projects that we have left. So if you subtract the $3 million out for Houston Middle, you subtract the $527,000 that's in line 590 for transfers to the city of Germantown, and then you've gotta subtract a two, an additional $200,000 for the fieldhouse, and you subtract all those out, what you're really left with is $1.6 million.
So Fieldhouse is not listed here yet?
It's not listed, but it would either come out of other capital outlay, or it could come out of building improvements or building construction, but it's gonna come from one of those.
It's gonna come out of there.
It's gonna come out of this budget. So when you're left with $1.6 million, I did a peek ahead at the projects that we have on our list, and we've talked about completing. And those projects, we rolled Dogwood's ADA project to next year. We have the portables that we have to remove, there's gonna be, that's gonna be a six-figure expenditure, we're working on the bid package for that right now. There's the bathroom renovations that we didn't get to complete this year at Houston High, Houston Middle, and Riverdale that's rolling to next year. Riverdale desperately needs to be painted now, once we tear it up this summer and do the Boiler Chiller renovation project, it's really going to need to be painted, but it needs to be painted today. So you've got that in the budget. We've got a Houston High band addition and paddock project that is gonna be funded from private dollar sum, but I'm sure we will have to come in and help in some regard on that.
It's already part of, it should've already been part of what we're already paying, though, that percentage of what we're already paying.
Well, what we're saying, though, is the auditorium, so when we talk about that $4 million project, and they talk about auditorium renovations, there wasn't money, yeah, but that's.
But that's gonna be potential later.
Yes, but that is all tied to the same project, remember?
Yes.
We've gotta do some auditorium renovations. So really, when we look at the fieldhouse project, when you put that together.
That wasn't included.
Right, that one included, but when we talk about replacing the band building, that's going away with practice space and storage space for them, and also the 2.6, and it hadn't gone to bid yet for the fieldhouse, we're easily over $3 million there, that doesn't leave a lot of money to do renovations for the auditoriums, so know that.
And we're looking at auditorium, just starting at least with the Phase 1 project of lights, that's consistently been identified as the biggest challenging, challenging problem in there, but, and we need to look at this, and it all circles back to ongoing conversations that we've had, but it really makes sense for us, once we know our true footprint, to look, anytime you do a rental project, it makes sense to look at whether it make, whether it makes financial sense to just build new versus renovation. And we want, we, we need to look at that, but there's nowhere on the current Houston High footprint to put in a brand-new building or auditorium or arts and athletics facility, so it all circles back to that conversation.
Here we are, Maggie, good.
Back again to the M.R.U., or on the space.
And then we have the Houston High softball field, which has been brought up, but once, assuming we get that field, we have to have the money to pay for the renovations that are needed to that field, the possible indoor complex, that's easily a million-dollar plus project. We've got Dogwood's ceiling, tile, and grid on the list as well. After this summer, we'll be done with Farmington, and done with Riverdale's old building, and Dogwood really does need to be next. So all in, that's easily $6 to $7 million in work, and what we've got left in our general fund budget is really $1.6 million here. Now, the wild card, which we, Mr. Manuel advocated for, as did other superintendents at the Shelby County Commission meeting, is to get, is the Shelby County Commission dollars that have been allocated to us. We received 400,000-plus here recently, right, Kevin?
Yeah.
There's still 4.8 million that's still lingering out there, but we never know what bucket is going to come in or when it's going to come. So Mr. Manuel lobbied the commission at the most recent meeting, as did some of the other superintendents, and pleased if we could depend on that and have a schedule of when we are going to receive that, then we could actually start incorporating it into our capital budget and planning to use those dollars. But the way it comes now, it's so sporadic, you can't.
It comes every quarter, but you have no idea what, what you're gonna receive.
And it's tied to when Shelby County draws on it.
Actually draws.
Shelby County schools.
Shelby County schools.
And it, why, is there, is there a policy in place?
I have questions.
Or, I'm curious about the legality of that, because they are still supposed to fund all, it is the responsibility of the county to fund. all, it is the responsibility of the county to fund the education of the children of the county.
So I've questioned that a couple of times.
They're funding it, they're just not releasing it.
But this is a different pot of money.
Well, I, I understand, I'm just saying, I think that there may be, I'm wondering if sitting on the pot of money is a legal issue.
Yes, that is my question, is, the way that they do this is they go out to bond, and so when they go out for, let's say it's $80 million, and our share would be $5 million of that, when they sell those bonds, it is, and there are very specific regulations about how you use bond proceeds. I have that same question about what is determining the fact that they're not giving us that funding until the draw at Shelby County?
Now, how are they allocating that interest income as well?
That's a good question.
So, so I have posed that, I have posed that question, and so the only answer that I got back was that they were concerned that in the past, and this didn't apply to us, this must have been with Shelby County and Memphis City Schools, one or two of the partnerships was getting ahead on the funding, so when Shelby County wouldn't use the funding, and I guess Memphis City was drawing it, and then Shelby County would ask for it again, that they would get that next year, they would get four-person again, that's a bookkeeping problem, not a disbursement problem. So that's the only answer that I got, I did not get a definitive legal or policy, it's just someone has made that determination, but that is something that we are, will continue to ask.
Thank you again for going, now we've talked about that many times since then, but...
I just want to paint a full picture for the board, that $1.6 million isn't going to get all those projects done that we just listed, it's not even going to scratch the surface on them.
I don't even know that I got them all down, so...
I mean, if we were to look, look at our, our capital plan and what we need to get done, you're looking at $6 to $7 million next year.
Easily, yes, ma'am, and I did include projects the city has already agreed to fund, the security improvements, the finishing the Riverdale Boiler Chiller project, those are things that have been allocated, so I didn't include those, but all those other things are on our capital plan.
I think the other challenge, too, that Mr. Kathy isn't mentioning, is typically this budget does other projects besides the big ones that the board sees, so...
I did not mention that.
If we do a water fountain, if we're doing a hardwood court in a gym, I mean, all those are much smaller projects, but usually, those are also paid for.
Carpet in the library.
Carpets in the libraries.
It all comes out of this budget, yeah, that is...
Speaking of water fountains, will the, the, all the work we have to do to correct our current issue come out of this budget or this, the current new budget?
It will come out of capital budget if we're replacing something, it will come out of maintenance if we're, if we're maintaining our current equipment, that's always down to the most...
The 18, 19 budget or 19, 20 budget?
It would depend on when we do the work. Yeah, if we do it in this fiscal year, it'll come out of this, this year's dollars, if we do it in the next fiscal year, it'll come out of next year's fiscal dollars.
I didn't know if we were going to try to tackle it all.
It won't be...
This year.
It won't be as big issues as we originally believed.
Really, good.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Yeah, I think the biggest issue is like, I gave you the example of an eye-wash fountain that is sat stagnant for 10 years, and they test it without flushing it, of course, it's going to happen.
So are you re-flushing?
Yeah, so when they flushed it and then tested again, there weren't those issues, so in most of those places.
Good. Good.
Any other questions about the regular capital outlay budget?
Nope, but it would help if the city would cover our repay, our...
Debt service.
Debt service.
It's a, it's a conversation that you guys have had before, but it's, it's worth having again, because the dollars that we spend out of the general fund that go into this capital budget are dollars that can't be allocated in the general fund elsewhere, so it's a, it's a conversation to continue having.
And I've had that with every other one, except for that we would like that taken over. That's been my request.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Haddo.
First, I'll follow you guys around, then probably during work day, for other, she may have a few issues later, busy week.
Yeah, just a little bit.
And then, yeah, I'm going to kind of work a little backwards, what you're looking at on page 43, is we start from the bottom, and it's account 544, I'm sorry, 509, it says other charges, the year before, previous, 2019, there was nothing there, so what you should be looking at is $11,000, I'm sorry, $14,500, and that is because of costs that I would define as non-fundamentally, teachers and staff have to have a TBI background check every five years, and that just came to us this year, so there's a cost that's associated with that.
So we got to pay to retest everybody.
Does that include us?
I was going to say.
Every five years.
So that would be Linda.
Would that include Linda?
Unless she was done, when she was re-elected.
No.
Okay.
Every five years?
We don't know what she's been achieved the last five years.
We're going to watch carefully.
I don't know, it worked out.
Linda, we'll start with you.
I'm sure it's going to be... I just have mine done, you know, not that long ago.
So we're good for four more years.
That's pretty substantial in this budget, and then moving up, the chain there, what you see is, I'm looking at it, which you see a lot of the staffing changes on that is the Forest Hill Elementary and the staffing associated with that, with that, that line item that's got three down by, and I think it's number...
189.
189. Bunch of monitors.
We allocated some money, some summer money there, where most people come back maybe in the second or third week of July, in some of those clerical positions, we realized that we may have to get people situated there a little bit earlier for training purposes, and that can get an act made with the new school board, what I'm talking about is the attendance secretary, the spending secretary, and the financial secretary, so that's where you see a little bit of this thing. I think that's it for the majority of that particular budget.
The rest is related to Forest Hill. Okay, any questions on, that's it. Angela?
Maybe it's on to, yep, that's the next one, here's what I'm getting ahead of.
Okay. Mr. Haddo.
So with the, kind of, with the human resources line, start from the top, the one thing that you may catch is a little bit, actually, you don't see anything with, with human resources, except me, setting out, Jason's already referred to, I think Mason's coming over, so you may see a little bit of change there, and besides that, the other big change that you may have is that we're trying to, or we're, I mean, is we're going to look at, seriously looking at bringing substitutes in-house, so if you see a little bit of change with some of the cost of the low-end products, note that there's an Apple Trax feature there, and that other, it looks to be with that, with that's other charges down below with $11,400.
Where was it?
Now, Apple Trax is software, do you?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's in the, it's in the software.
471, line 471?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
So Apple Trax is coming, right now, we're using Apple Trax for our onboarding platform for the owners.
Was that the purchase, the $21,000 purchase last year?
Correct, so one time, we did a budget transfer this year.
Right.
Probably maybe within the past two months, and some of it was the implementation fees to get those products up and running, and right now, we're going through that transition.
Okay, so the 18-4 is to add the potential...
Uh, it's the renewal.
It's the renewal.
So you dropped the implementation cost to that.
And based on the, bringing the substitutes in-house, where would that be applied?
We're in it now, so the time, it's going to be the software, 471, and so some of it is we paid for, for the implementation, time and attendance is what they call it, and we've already started that, so we've already paid them for the implementation, but the renewal comes in...
But you won't see that till next budget year when we're talking about bringing, actually, now, this is the step to start looking.
Start looking at that for next...
Yes.
Okay.
The substitutes are in a different budget.
For fiscal year 2021.
That was my question, I was like, I didn't think what you were referencing.
Next year?
In this, it's not...
It's in a different account, so you'll see it under...
Yeah, it's about $530,000.
Actual cost for substitutes is not...
It's not this one, this is, it's going to be software, we're going to name.
I think what you're going to see is the HR functions, getting these subs onboard, and then you got the orientation and the onboarding, and then the time and attendance is if I'm the teacher, I get to go through this, sign that Dan's going to be out, and